Follow the order and if you could please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dale, if you could lead us, please.
Please stand and face the flag. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands where my nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Hoorah.
All right, roll call, please.
Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
Vice Chair Poichert.
Present.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Present.
Commissioner Esbender.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
All present, two vacancies.
Okay, good deal. It's time for oral communications from the audience on items not in agenda. Do we have any requests?
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay. Sir, I think you wanted to make a statement before?
Yes, before you start considering your business items, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I wanted to bring to your attention that the city council has adopted an ordinance subjecting all commissions to the rules and procedures that the city council is subject to. And the the import of that is that in order to enact or pass a resolution, it will now require a majority of the number of seats for the commission. This is a seven-member commission. Two seats are vacant. Therefore, any resolution to be passed will require four votes. Another provision that's of import is that abstentions will be counted as an affirmative vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Did you hear that?
All right, let's go and get on to business here. Planning Commission meeting minutes, we have three of them. One from May tenth, the other from May thirty-first, and the other from November eighth. Did you guys get a chance to glance at those?
Move to accept the May tenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
I want to make a comment.
Hold on, Frank has a comment. Yes, sir.
On the minutes, all three of them?
Okay.
My last name is spelled with an S. My name is Z A L E Z. I just want to make a correction.
What correction? End with an S?
And I agree with the minutes.
Okay, so we have a minor correction of the spelling of Mr. Gonzalez's last name?
Can I just confirm it's G O N Z A L E S?
Z A L E Z.
L E Z. Thank you.
Mr. The manager is S.
So, thanks.
Oh, you guys are from different countries?
Yes.
All right, okay. Other than that, do we have any other corrections?
A second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it looks like.
Move to accept the May thirty-first.
Oh, I thought you said all three dates. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Should take them separately.
Yeah, go ahead.
Move to accept the May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission minutes meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
Move to accept November eighth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, let's get on with our first item. Thank you. Well, Mr. Dan.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'll be giving the presentation on tonight's public hearing item. The file numbers, just for reference, are tentative parcel map number twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 three, conditional development permit number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three seven, precise plan of design number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six one, and environmental assessment review number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five nine. This is an application project that was submitted by C H Realty X I Rialto LP. The project is entitled the Lilac Avenue and Santa Anna Avenue Warehouse Project. So each of you should have a copy of the slide presentation in front of you, and it's also on the monitors here in the council chambers. So here, on this slide, we have the project site for you. The site is thirteen point six nine gross acres in size. It's located at the southwest corner of Santa Anna Avenue and Lilac Avenue. It is comprised of five parcels of land. Each of the parcels has a general plan land use designation of light industrial and a zoning designation of light manufacturing M one. You can see on the aerial image here, I've highlighted the boundary of the project site. About three-quarters of the site, the north end, is currently vacant land. And then the south three-quarter, excuse me, one quarter of the site on the north end is vacant land. And the southerly three-quarters of the site is currently developed as a truck and trailer yard. It was previously occupied by Alliance Shippers. And as you can see here, to the north across Santa Anna Avenue, there's an existing industrial warehouse. To the east, on the other side of Lilac Avenue, are several industrial developments. And then to the south, while the image shows vacant land, that's a site that the Planning Commission had recently approved the development of a sixty-eight thousand square foot industrial warehouse on. So that's a that's a site that's actively going through the development process right now. And then to the west are existing single-family residences that are located within the jurisdiction of the county of San Bernardino. And so what the applicant proposes to do is take the five parcels of land that make up the site and consolidate those into one thirteen point six eight net acre parcel of land and then redevelop the site with a three hundred and one thousand square foot industrial warehouse building. This slide just shows you the parcel map, again consolidating those five parcels into one thirteen point six eight net acre parcel of land. There is no minimum parcel size required for the M one zone, so this would meet the requirements. Next slide is showing you the site design. You have an image of the site plan there on the right side of the slide. The applicant will place the building more on the west side of the site, and then the truck court will be on the east side of the site. This was purposely planned this way so that the truck court, so the building acts as a buffer between the truck court and the residence to the west, so that none of those residents will will see or interact or hear.
So the traffic, truck traffic will be on Lilac Avenue?
Truck traffic will take access from both Santa Anna and Lilac. I'll get into that. But yeah, the truck court will face Lilac Avenue.
Okay.
It will be fully enclosed with a fourteen-foot-high concrete tilt-up wall to ensure complete screening of all the activities within the truck court. The applicant will also install passenger vehicle parking areas on both the north and south sides of the site, and there will be a total of one hundred and eighty parking spaces. Inside the truck court, there are spaces for up to eighty-three trucks and trailers. And then getting into the driveways here, there are three. I've marked them on the site plan there with the red arrows. The driveway on the west side of Santa Anna Avenue is proposed to be twenty-six feet in width. That will be for passenger vehicles only. It will be a full-access driveway. The easterly driveway on Santa Anna Avenue will be for both passenger vehicles and trucks. It'll have forty-four, forty-foot width. I do want to note that while passenger vehicles will be able to utilize it as full access, the trucks will be required to come and go from the east. There's a condition of approval in the resolution that prohibit any of the trucks coming and going from the west, so that they will not be going through any of those residential areas. Then the driveway on Lilac Avenue, there's that one driveway at the southerly end. That is for, again, both trucks and passenger vehicles. That would be a full-access driveway for passenger vehicles. But again, for the trucks, there is a condition of approval that requires the trucks to utilize that segment from Lilac immediately to and from Santa Anna Avenue. And then that way, they're on a designated truck route. And then again, they go from there easterly towards Riverside Avenue to avoid any residential areas. Additionally, the applicant will plant, provide landscape planners throughout the site. You can kind of see those with the green areas on the site plan, and then an underground infiltration basin for stormwater. This is the floor plan of the building. It is anticipated it'll have up to two hundred ninety-four thousand square feet of area dedicated to storage and then up to seven thousand square foot for office. That would come from a combination of a ground floor office and a second floor mezzanine. The applicant anticipates office pods being at either the northeast or southeast corners of the building. And then also you can see there on the right side of the floor plan, the thirty-five dock-high doors for trucks to unload and load. This is an image of the three D rendering. This perspective is if we were at the intersection of Lilac and Santa Anna, and we were facing southwest towards the building. And as you can see, this building will feature wall plan articulation, both horizontally and vertically from offset wall panels and height variations. Those breaks have at least three foot in depth, some areas even more. Then the height variations range from forty-two feet up to forty-six feet from the finished floor. The exterior of this building will be of concrete tilt-up walls, a palette of five colors. There are essentially four white to gray tones and then a blue accent. And then generous amounts of glazing will be installed on all four sides of the building. And then also form liners, reveals, and metal eyebrow accents also, again, throughout all sides of the building. Next, we have a color image here of the conceptual landscape plan. The applicant's proposed landscape coverage is twelve point four percent, which exceeds the city's minimum requirement. This will primarily come from the twenty-five-foot landscape setbacks that the applicant will provide along both Santa Anna Avenue and Lilac Avenue, but then also through from planters around the perimeter of the building and the perimeter, interior perimeter of the project site. The applicant will also install landscaping in the public right-of-way parkways along both streets. Throughout all the planters, they will plant drought-tolerant plants and then trees every thirty of the near feet. That kind of covers the design and layout of the building. We'll go into just some of the analysis now that was done. And there's a traffic analysis prepared for this project by Urban Crossroads, which is included in your agenda report. The trip generation within that report estimates that this project would generate up to five hundred and twenty daily vehicle trips. The breakdown of that would be two hundred and ten daily truck trips and three hundred and ten daily passenger vehicle car trips. The study analyzed nine intersections in the area. In the study, it determined that there are cumulative impacts to two of the intersections analyzed. Those specific intersections are Riverside Avenue and the I-ten freeway eastbound ramps, and then also the intersection of Riverside Avenue and Slover Avenue. The traffic study provides recommended improvements that would address those impacts so that those intersections would operate at an acceptable level of service. The recommended improvements are the expansion of Riverside Avenue from four lanes south of the freeway to six lanes in that segment. And with that, that would bring that those intersections back to an acceptable level of service. There is a fair share, a cost estimate table included in the report, and a fair share assessment as well. The applicant's fair share for that improvement is eight hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred and five dollars. There is a condition of approval in the resolutions before you tonight that require the payment of that fair share fee prior to issuance of any permits.
What is that fair share going to pay for?
It would pay for the improvements that would bring those two intersections to an acceptable level of service.
What do you anticipate?
It's the widening of Riverside Avenue in from the eastbound ramps, which are the south portion of the bridge, all the way down to the intersection of Slover. So right now, it's limited in its lanes. There would be additional travel lanes provided, widening of the road in order to bring that back to an acceptable level of service.
Daniel, did you mention the LOS?
Yes, so I may have not specifically said level of service, but the cumulative impacts mean that those two intersections would have, with all the cumulative projects, an unacceptable level of service. But to get it back to an acceptable level of service, there are recommendations in the report, and the applicant is required to pay a fair share towards those recommended improvements.
So that's included in the fair share?
Yes, yes. So their fair share would take care of the applicant's obligation towards bringing those intersections back up to an acceptable level of service.
And would they be completed before, by the time the building's finished?
Not necessarily. The applicant will be paying their fair share towards that. So there's, you know, an accumulation of money, timing of projects, and then also monitoring. They're not necessarily operating at that unacceptable level of service now. They're projected to if all of these projects operate at their worst-case scenario. So it's more of a monitoring. As development occurs, does that become an unacceptable level of service in reality? And then the city should have been collecting money throughout that process to move forward on those improvements.
So it's possible that this could open up with an unacceptable standard?
It's possible. It's not the applicant that would be taking on that project. That's a more regional project, that they will be paying their their fair share fees toward.
When would that be concluded, in your opinion?
I do not have a precise timeframe. We could ask the traffic engineer that prepared the study. They might have some more information on that.
Are they here?
They are here tonight, yes.
I have one more question, Daniel. The property is owned by the developer or is it unspecified? They don't have any business yet.
We need them to confirm if they've closed on the property or not. I defer that question to the applicant. Would you like I continue with my presentation?
Please.
Okay, so kind of as I discussed a little bit during the site design, also made some notes there in the slide presentation that all the trucks would utilize only designated truck routes, Santa Anna Avenue and Riverside Avenue. And none of the trucks from this development will use Santa Anna Avenue west of the site in order to prevent trucks from going through those residential areas. Continuing on, there was an initial study prepared for this project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. That was prepared by First Carbon Solutions. Through that, it was determined that this project qualified for a mitigated negative declaration. The initial study and all supporting technical studies were circulated for a thirty-day public comment review period that was from June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, to July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. There were two comment letters that were received during that timeframe. The comment letters are included in your agenda report. They came from Colton Joint Unified School District and also a group known as Advocates for the Environment. The Colton Unified School District's letter primarily expressed concerns about the trucks and where they're going and a desire to make sure that those trucks do not head west into those residential areas where there are some schools in the area. And so that is a primary driver of why there are those conditions of approval in your resolutions tonight to prohibit the trucks from going west. And again, the traffic analysis was done with the trucks not going west. So very early on, engaging the school district and planning this project to have the trucks go the opposite direction of any schools in any residential areas.
And there are four schools within that vicinity?
There are schools in the Bloomington area, yep. And that's what the Colton Unified School District was concerned, would this project be sending trucks by those schools? And the answer is no. The answer is the resolutions prohibit trucks from going west past those schools. The trucks will be required to go east on Santa Anna Avenue to Riverside Avenue, avoiding all the schools.
What happens when they don't?
If, okay, so the conditions of approval do have specifics as far as signage for the driver saying, when they're exiting, you gotta go east on Santa Anna. There's a condition in there that also says that the landlord and the tenant need to abide by that. If it's observed that the trucks are not following those conditions of approval, those requirements, and it becomes a problem, the Planning Commission has the authority to bring that item back to the commission to consider initiating proceedings to revoke the conditional development permit, if it were to get to that.
The only reason I asked that is because I see trucks going all over neighborhood streets. The truck corridors are okay, but we have semis driving on neighborhood streets. And I'm thinking, I'm looking at Target as an example, where they, the truckers, just ignore everything. So that's why my question is, what are they going to do if they don't?
Yeah, it's a good question. The city does have authority to take action on that. And this this permit that they've applied, the applicant has applied for, really gives that authority to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Moving on, the applicant, in addition to their proposal, has also put forward a proposal to make a voluntary contribution of one dollar per square foot, so three hundred and one thousand dollars. It would go towards public safety and public facility needs throughout the city of Rialto.
What about the schools? Do they get anything out of it?
The the schools will get, yes, school fees will be required to be paid, and proof of payment will be required prior to issuance of a building permit. So the fees will also be paid to the Colton Unified School District.
And the reason for that, and let me explain the reason, my reason for asking the question, because there's a lot of pollution going to be put out by these trucks. And I guess it's on a twenty-four-seven operation?
It could potentially be. They do not have a tenant at this time, but it could potentially have a twenty-four-hour tenant.
And I'm looking at the pollution that's created by, and if it's not twenty-four-seven, big trucks create a lot of pollution. And that's my concern, because generally, these warehouses are built around poor neighborhoods. And the kids who go to the school in those neighborhoods catch the the brunt of the damage. And that's why I'm concerned, because I'm more concerned about what's it going to do for the city residents. I don't have any problem with warehouses, as long as they're built to keep the safety of the residents in mind. And I don't think we've been doing that as a city, but that's my opinion.
Yeah. Kind of elaborating on some of that, there was a air quality assessment prepared for this project, health risk assessment due to the proximity of the residents in the area. The outcome of those assessments is that the emissions that would be generated by this project are below the thresholds of significance that are determined by the Air Quality Management District.
Okay, and I'm also remembering that we talked last meeting about the Air Quality Control District that is citing warehouses that don't comply with what they're supposed to do. And I'm thinking, are we getting into another Pandora's box with this this block project?
Okay, I'll continue on. Okay, just really in summary, I'm getting near the end of my presentation here. So the project that you see before you tonight, the proposed warehouse, it is consistent with the underlying M one zone. Again, the site is zoned as an industrial zone. It does meet and exceed the standards in the municipal code for warehouse developments, that chapter eighteen, one, one-two of the city's, or the Rialto Municipal Code. It is also consistent with the industrial uses to the north, to the east, and to the south. This careful consideration has been taken by staff and the applicant throughout this process to minimize impacts from the development to the residents to the west. I'd just remind the commission that currently it's a truck and trailer yard that has trucks that park up against the fence of the residents to the west. This project will place a building forty-six feet away so that there will be a SEPA landscape planter, then a building before any trucks. So the trucks are moving further east, being separated by a new building. That was done for the purpose of, again, complying with the municipal code and ensuring that this this project lessens the impacts that the residents are currently experiencing with the current development there. So again, the truck court's been placed on the east side of the building, away from those sensitive uses. It'll also be fully screened with concrete screen walls and then extensive landscaping planted completely around the site, again, to just minimize the impacts of this development. The environmental studies that were prepared for the project did determine that that these impacts are less than significant with incorporation of the mitigation measures that are cited within the attached mitigation monitoring reporting program that will be required to be implemented prior to issuance of a grading permit, prior to certificate of occupancy. And then, again, this project would redevelop and improve this particular site from a truckyard into a enclosed building with the use that is the highest and best use accommodated by the M one zone. And then, again, public hearing notices were mailed out for this hearing tonight to all property owners within a thousand feet of the project site, and it was also.
What's the response?
I did not receive any responses from sending the public hearing notice out. There's possible there could be somebody in the audience, but no advance notice. And with that, the staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the applications before you tonight. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any question, any additional questions available to answer those, the applicant's also in the audience, as well as their technical team.
Let's go and open the public comment first, and then we'll go and take staff questions.
Okay, maybe applicant.
Chairman, the technical language issue, you mean public hearing, correct?
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Where did I say?
Public comment.
Yeah, it's been a long day.
I think the applicant would like to. The applicant would first like to say something.
Yeah.
Commissioners, thank you again for for hearing our project tonight. My name is Scott Irwin. I work with a company called Seafried. We are in partnership with C H Realty on this project. We closed on it in May of twenty twenty, so we own the property. I think Daniel Casey did a great presentation and outlined all the information of the projects. I have nothing further to kind of clarify. Obviously, open for questions. One other question you had asked about the school fees, it's a seventy-eight cent dollar per square foot fee that we'll be paying to the to the schools in addition to the fees that we're paying. So thank you again. Staff has been fantastic, I must say. You know, we work in a lot of cities in Rialto, and Daniel and his team and Colby have been fantastic to work with, very responsive, and just like to thank everyone for for the hard work. So, thank you.
I have a question actually made for both of you. So on the the travel lanes, the new travel lane through the expansion of the right-of-way in that area, his fair share, I think that the way I'm reading this correctly, is eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. What is? What is needed to do it, though? Is that, is that the cost needed for that lane or is that his fair share? Because where I'm getting at is that, is it really a fair share cost? If that didn't exist, that lane wouldn't be needed, so shouldn't it be paying for all of it?
Yeah, I mean. And then I think we can probably also see if the traffic engineer can also come up and probably provide more technical professional response. But the eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar is a fair share fee based on the percentage of trips that go through those intersections that originate from their development. And so this is a.
That's demanding the new lane, right?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a total cost and then they're putting so many trips through that intersection. And whatever that percentage is, that's their fair share fee. So if they're ten percent of all the trips, they pay ten percent of the fee.
Could this, so just hypothetically thinking, let's say this was to go to approval, recommendation for approval. Could we put a condition that the lane must be added concurrently at the same time with the project or else it doesn't get done? So that way it'll force the city and the builder to have that lane. Because Riverside Avenue over that ten freeway, it's a nightmare. I mean, it's, it is crazy trying to get over that. If you ever in Bloomington or Riverside trying to go up from there to Rialto, you can't get through.
It's impossible.
It's impossible. So I mean, could that be a condition?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that would be a difficult condition to place because it's not within the, the control of either the developer or the city by itself because of the overpass being with Caltrans and with the San Bernardino County or the Transportation Authority has jurisdiction over that as well, so.
So how can that be addressed?
Yeah, well, I would just hate to authorize such a project that we know would severely impact the, the community.
I can just add on that, the, the traffic analysis looks at also just project traffic. And so this, this project on its own would not make that an unacceptable level of service. It's when we factor in all the cumulative projects that again are kind of hypothetical. So if they're all operating at worst case scenario, then the traffic engineer projects these intersections are failing. And, and if we've approved all these projects that are making it failing, we should have collected all the money to address it at that point.
So I'd like to hear about the traffic study. I'm excited to hear about that because I think we're at worst case scenario already, I think. So that traffic, I don't know how long, what your observations were, what studies you, you put in place, but that travel from Bloomington on Riverside Avenue to go on the freeway or over that bridge is impossible to move, especially during peak traffic hours? So do you already feel based on your analysis, I didn't read your full study, so I'm, I'm leaning on you to summarize it for me a bit, is it already at its hunted capacity already based on my layman's observations?
It, it's not. So traffic counts are conducted when we initiated traffic studies. So we take actual traffic counts that are collected out in the field for these study intersections. And as Daniel mentioned, we looked at nine of them. When that data is collected, they're collected during peak commute timeframes. And they're two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. And the analysis considers the one hour peak between each of those two hour periods and then reports an average delay for each intersection. And so it's not, there might be a location where you might experience extreme delays for maybe ten minutes, fifteen minutes, but the rest of the hour, it's fine. You wouldn't have a deficiency, wouldn't be reported in the analysis for an intersection like that because it takes an average of the, the whole hour.
Okay, what hours did you choose?
So the typical standards are seven to nine in the morning and four to six in the afternoon.
Those are pretty.
She hasn't sat in the traffic, has she?
What was the timeframe of the study?
Like, when was it, when were the traffic counts conducted?
Yeah, the span of it that you were looking at wasn't just random two days out of the month?
The traffic counts are collected on a typical weekday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, so midweek, on a non-holiday and when schools are in session. For this traffic study, the traffic counts were collected in February of twenty twenty-two.
What was the sample size?
I'm not sure which are.
Is it one day?
Yes, it's typically one day.
So just one day analysis?
That's correct.
And that's what we're coming up with? It's not a period of thirty day analysis?
No, it's an average typical day. You have to make sure that there's no poor weather conditions, visibility issues. Schools have to be in session, not adjacent to a holiday, and you conduct accounts. That's standard engineering practice.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any more questions? Do you have any question, Travis?
All right, I just, do you have any estimate of when this, the cumulative fix might be for that intersection?
So the cumulative traffic conditions for purposes of just evaluating in the environmental study looks at a very conservative condition. So we must consider basically any project that we're aware of has an application. And we get that not just from the city, but if there are county projects that are applicable, those are also included. It's a very conservative estimation on potential future traffic in the near term condition should all of these cumulative developments develop over the same time period. The, and then I don't know if the city can weigh in on these same projects, but for the two intersections that were identified as being deficient, the Riverside Avenue I-ten eastbound off-ramp and the Riverside-Slover intersection, both of those intersections and the improvements that were evaluated in the traffic study overlap with the improvements identified as part of the I-ten Riverside Freight Improvement Project and also the Riverside Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. So the combination of those two projects covers the improvements that were assumed as part of this traffic study. That is also the source of the fair shared dollar amount that was applied. And then just for, just to note, the project's contribution at the eastbound ramps is four percent and four point six percent at the intersection of Riverside and Slover. And that's not of total traffic, that's of net new traffic. So basically, everything above existing conditions, all that net new traffic, the project's percentage of that traffic.
So my question is, when would you project that they would be completed?
That's why I was mentioning these two projects. I don't know the exact timing. I don't know if the city has timing on those projects because the completion of those projects would mean completion of these improvements.
So part of the challenge there is that we already know that, that, that those, those locations are impacted and they have historically been impacted, but there would be no best guess when it would happen to be the resolution to be concluded?
Correct, there's no, I mean, I don't have any.
So we could end up with years of issues?
But just before you go, just so I make sure I'm clear, this total traffic analysis is based on four hours of one day?
The trip counts, the trip counts that are.
That's what this is all, that's where you're coming with the full summary.
The existing traffic on the streets, yep. And I just want to reiterate that the impacts are not just project impact, they're cumulative impact. Meaning they're, they're hypothetical. If all the projects, as she was explaining, that they analyze every project, no matter what its status is. They just barely put in an application for it. Half of those projects potentially may never even build, but they're factored in, into it in order to ensure that they're counting for everything. The worst case scenario, they all build out and they all operate at the worst case scenario, now those intersections are, are operating at the, the unacceptable level of service. And, and they are, as a result, they're providing a, a fair share based on them operating at the worst case scenario. And they themselves may not either. Right, their, their, their fair share is all based off of they operated this for five hundred and ten trips a day, which again, it's hypothetical. We don't know the tenants of any of these buildings. We don't know if these buildings are even gonna develop. But if they do and they all operate at worst case scenario, the city has a plan for it. It's not operating at an unacceptable level of service now, and it would not with just this project.
Okay.
But when it is, we have a plan in place to address it. And these monies will go towards that plan.
And that, that study goes out twenty years, right? And we're projecting that, that completely, right? All right, tell me how long that will go.
Daniel, real quick, I, I hate to be stuck on this topic, but the, the sample size requirements, is that industry standard or is that city required? Like, could we say we want thirty days of Monday, of random days, a Monday, a Friday? I mean, is that the city's minimum requirement or is that the industry standards?
I'm not sure about the industry standards, but they're meeting the city's requirement.
Yeah, we need to, I'll talk about that after.
Yeah, the city has guidelines for preparing traffic impact analysis.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So the applicants follow.
So nothing to do with that, yeah, it's the city, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might add, and I'll defer to correction from the traffic engineer. My understanding of the way this works is that the traffic counts are to determine what's the current level of service.
Right.
Then they look at how much traffic is this project going to add to that? And does that impact it? And that determination is that it still remains at an acceptable level. Then they look at all of the projects that are potentially in the pipeline or maybe developing over that twenty year time span to determine.
Now, I got, I have zero concern about future projections. My concern is the established baseline that that's built on. The, what is the, the, the observed data analysis that's done? I think it's, and it's nothing to do with the applicant or this, it's the city that we'll talk about later is four hours of one day is not a reasonable measurement of a baseline for me that lives in this city seeing that you can establish. Because your math is all, it doesn't matter what your math is and what your projection is forward. It's based on, if you're establishing a set baseline off of four hours of one day, that's putting a lot of faith in one day. I mean, it.
Or four hours.
Wednesday, which is probably the least day. It's not on Monday or Friday where people are trying to get home. That's my concern, which has nothing to do with any of this. It's whatever the city's requirements are that I'd like to revisit later is what my concern is.
And then to Commissioner Poikert's concern, the projects that the traffic engineer mentioned are the multi-party projects with the city, the county, the Transportation Authority, and, and I think likely the, the railroad as well because of the freight and the rail lines across there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a concern, after all of this, I think we're still gonna have a bottleneck. A, a level of service is gonna be F simply because of the, the heavy impact that traffic is, is gonna be caused during the development. And I don't know how to, how to handle that or how you would handle it.
So those recommendations are included in the report and the improvements are programmed. So the city does have a program in place. Now, as far as the timing, we need to confer with engineering and our traffic engineer to see if, what the timing is, if there is any timing for those improvements. But again, it's currently operating at an acceptable level of service. If this project gets built, it will continue to operate at an acceptable level of service. If they all get built, all of the cumulative that we looked at in a two mile radius around the site, that's when we're potentially looking at an unacceptable level of service, potentially. Because again, we don't know the tenants, we don't know who's gonna go in those buildings. A study may say there's two hundred truck trips, but in reality, there's ten. They're gonna pay their fair share fee as if they did have two hundred, but they may only have ten. Because it's, it's a, it's a potential. It's unknown at this point, but we're planning for the worst case scenario.
All right, I guess we have enough more?
No.
We can stop with the public comment.
Public comment.
Do you have anyone requesting to speak?
We do have one speaker.
Okay.
Jonathan Daley.
Hi, Jonathan, can you go on up? Can you please state your address for the record? It could be your business address, too.
Yes, sir. My name is Jonathan Daley. My address, I currently reside or rent in Riverside, but me and my wife and my son are looking to buy here when the market does, you know, go in our favor at some point. Like I said, my name is Jonathan Daley. I'm a Marine Corps veteran and a very proud member of Launa Labor's Union. I'm here today on behalf of our members and our families in favor of this project. It's projects like this that allow us to earn our place here in the community while getting the opportunity to feel like we are giving back. It is a very great feeling being a contributing member and seeing this community grow and comes with a great sense of pride. Projects like these are what keep food on our tables and families together within this community. And that is why we love to do, why we love doing what we do. With that said, this is a very responsible developer who will provide great union contractors and provide a well-trained union workforce who builds to the highest standards, and it is an honor to be a part of that. We ask that you please approve this project so that we can continue to serve in this community. And these projects allow members like myself, who have a wife and kid at home, to hopefully be sole contributor members and live within this community and not have to drive to L.A. or study work. These projects continue to give people like me a greater purpose. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions?
That was it.
Move to close, Flora Carey.
Second.
Anyone opposed to that?
Move to adopt the attached resolution exhibits, J, K, L, and M, thereby adopting the mitigated negative decoration prepared for the project and thereby approving the consolidation of five parcels of land, Sessors Parcel Number zero-two-five-eight dash one-two-oh dash five-eight dash five-nine dash sixty dash sixty-one and sixty-eight into one parcel, a thirteen point sixty-eight net acre parcel of land and the development use of a three hundred and one thousand square foot industrial warehouse building on said parcel, subject to defined conditions therein.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I oppose, yes.
I oppose.
I oppose.
The motion fails, is there an alternative motion?
I move to deny the project based on overproliferation, traffic, and overproliferation and traffic.
Overproliferation.
Of warehouses and traffic and pollution. Do I have a second?
Sir. Aye, second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Motion fails.
So it's three to two again?
Because of the issue I raised at the commencement of the, of the meeting that four votes are required to enact any, all right, any motion.
So at this point, what would be the appropriate action? Have more dialogue to see or do you continue it for the next meeting?
I, I would want to consult with, you could maybe call a recess and I could take a look at the municipal code to see what the applicant's appeal rights are.
Okay.
So if there's not further delay, they may want to proceed with, with an appeal. Okay, ten minutes, we should be.
Take a ten minute recess, please, and we'll reconvene in ten minutes at six forty-five. Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
I think, uh, you had a comment.
Uh, it, it's come to our attention that the applicant would like to, uh, place on the record, uh, some rebuttal comments to the, some of the comments from the commission. And if, if that's acceptable to the chair, um, then I would recommend, uh, asking for a motion to reopen the public hearing and let the applicant put those comments into the record.
Yeah, I think that's fair and reasonable, that motion reopen, no problem. Okay, all right.
Thank you again for, for letting us be heard. Uh, I do wanna make everyone aware that the, we bought this project, it was owned by Shippers Alliance. Uh, they were, they were an extensive truck yard, there was a lot of trucks there. I think, I, I, we don't have the trips, and then there's, there's a tenant on there right now, McKenney Trailers, right? So there is trips already to the site. We, we, I, 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 I get your concern, and I'm not trying to plead here, you guys need to make your decision, but I'm truly convinced that, that we are actually gonna have a trip reduction. You're gonna have, you, you have a yards right here, you have a trail right here. I mean, we, the trucks are right next to these two residents right now, right? You're gonna have a, what was it, forty, forty-six foot setback, then you're gonna have a, what's the depth bar, I forget, three hundred feet or something? You're gonna, you're gonna be setting back, the trucks are gonna be set at least three, four hundred feet from the neighbors, right? And I'm, I, I, we don't have the existing trips of what is being.
That's what I was gonna ask, maybe the traffic.
Yeah, she, we, we were talking about that, we, we don't have.
How do we establish the baseline that we don't even know? That's where I get concerned.
Yeah.
This four hours of data analysis based in a thirty year warehouse? That's my biggest issue. Go ahead.
I'm saying, what we're saying is, uh, they, they don't have the trip counts, um, of the existing truck yard to see what the actual net increase or decrease would be. So they're, the applicant's willing to pay a fair share fee for this project as if they were the first project here.
Yeah.
Uh, where no fair share fee was ever provided for the existing truck yard use that's already generating truck trips.
Okay.
Um, and so, um, you know, it's very possible that there are more truck trips generated out of the site now than there would be with this warehouse.
I, honestly, I think the applicant should be more concerned about the fair share than I am. How, how are you establishing a fair share you have to pay when we don't even know what the existing truck traffics were?
They know what the existing traffic on the streets are. Had, had the city required them to, uh, factor in the trips from this truck yard, that would have drastically reduced the fair share fee, perhaps to zero.
We took zero, we assumed zero trucks.
Yeah.
The most conservative assumption of the current condition plus the warehouse there today. So if we would've established the number of trips.
What's going, going up here? If we would've, if we would've established, uh, the counts that are there today, they would reduce the counts that we're showing in the warehouse today and, and therefore reduce the number of trips, uh, that are contributing to the fair share contribution. But we took the most conservative approach saying those, those trips are already assumed in the counts that we took plus, uh, the, the warehouse that we're proposing here today. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that.
Sir? Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Sir, could you please put your name on the record?
Yeah, please.
For the administrative record, thank you.
My name is Dan Bick, I'm with Seafree Properties, I'm part of the applicant team.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I didn't wanna add anything, I just, I was gonna basically say what Dan just said right now, which is that typically for the traffic city, the purpose is to conduct the analysis in the most conservative manner. And in this instance, it would have been to take no credit. Had we taken their credit, it would have reduced the project trips coming off of the site, reduced their fair share contribution, reduced impacts, and probably reduced the size of the study area. Uh, we probably wouldn't have even looked at the size of the study area that we looked at had we had reduced the trips.
Okay. I appreciate that additional information, Dan, do you have anything else?
No. Unless you have any additional questions.
Anything else you guys have, anything else?
Chair, I, I wanted to comment, I'm sorry. Um, real quick, di- di- how many, how many trailer spaces are there available or shown on the plan currently?
Uh, the applicant is proposing a total of eighty-three. Um, so that's thirty-five at the dock doors and then, what is it, forty-two or forty-seven something trailer spaces?
So that's a correct number, I mean, I'm looking at an aerial of the existing site that's out there now. There's over a hundred and eighty trailers that are out there currently. Um, you know, this is, this is probably an older aerial, but if that's how many trucks they have now, then amount of trucks they will have on the site at any given time will be less than what's currently out there.
Would this be considered like a medium-sized warehouse? Probably is compared to what, since we have.
Compared to a million square foot, yeah.
It's smaller than many we've seen in the past. It's, it's smaller than the building to the north. So it's not the largest building.
So on the, um, the amount of trucks that are allowed on a project that size, how are we coming up with that number?
It is based on the square footage of the building. So, uh, there, there is the ITE, there's an Institute of Traffic Engineers that establishes a trip rate. And that says for a warehouse, it is estimated at worst case that it would generate this many trips per thousand square feet. And so, uh, for a three hundred thousand square foot warehouse, using that multiplication of just the rate times the square footage, two hundred and ten truck trips is the worst case scenario on a, on a daily basis. And that's what they'd be paying their fair share fee towards. Two hundred and ten new, not even factoring in the, Paul, Paul makes a good point that, yeah, if you look on the aerial uh, in the presentation, there are far more probably than two hundred on that site today. Um, so like, again, the tr- the project would likely reduce the number of, of trucks, uh, generated at this site while still paying a fair share fee.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned about the fair share, cause who knows when that will ever be used in the three hundred thousand public, that's really nothing.
But when the traffic guidelines are considered, um, it's possible that the project may have had zero dollars of fair share fee.
But we, we've asked before, and nothing to do with you guys here, but the, the spec buildings establishing greater restrictions on the conditional development permits that we're issuing, because they're gonna build a building, they have zero idea who the applicant's gonna be, zero idea of hours of operation, and we have no manage, no control really, I guess if you will, apply a poor word for a city to have, but over free enterprise, but when it's impacting the, uh, rush hours and all that, maybe we put something where the truck traffic is, is more focused on non-peak hours, maybe? You know?
Yeah, the, the conditional development permit is a tool for the commission to place.
Is there any restrictions on hours of operation right now in this conditional?
Not in the resolution before the commission, right now, there's a restriction on the number of vehicle trips and truck trips. It's all, we've matched it up to the traffic study. And, um, you know, certainly the commission has a discretion to change the conditions of approval, um, that you're going to consider adopting. Um, there are also conditions in there about the direction the trucks are going. Again, like I talked about, making sure they don't go into the residential areas to the west. There's also conditions in there about ensuring that the trucks do not stack or queue in the public streets. That they have to stack and queue on-site, again, just to not disrupt the city's level of service on these street segments. So tho- those are standard conditions that we've been placing on all warehouses, but.
What's the late, what's the ones we put on the hours of operations, refresh my memory on, on traffic? Have we done any lately?
Yes, there was one. Uh, it was, uh, near this site at, between Cactus and Lilac, a project by a group called Dato. It was a forty-three thousand square footer. And, um, there was, uh, like a daytime hour, as I recall, it was operation like seven to eight, something to that effect.
So if I may, Chair, I just wanted to point out to you, so if, if the project does not move forward and it's not approved, of course, they're gonna appeal it to city council, however, if they do not move forward, they do still have that use out there that's permitted by the city for Alliance, where they could continue this use with, with more trailers than what they're showing on their proposed plan.
For a much smaller footprint, right, cause we're gonna be consolidating all these lots?
The, uh.
There, there will be, oh.
As I say, the existing truck yard, if we look at the aerial, is about three quarters of the site.
Then why are we talking here then? If they can move forward, why is it even forward?
Uh. Go ahead.
It, it's a different type of use, they are proposing the building, what's out there now is just trailer storage.
Yeah, there's a truck, truck yard, it's a truck yard right now.
Yeah.
Three quarters acre, three quarters the size of truck yard. Um, they could continue to operate that use. There, they would like to redevelop the site into a warehouse.
All right.
Uh, that would, would likely generate less truck traffic than the truck yard does.
Okay. Any questions, staff? All right, uh, the last two motions have failed.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I might, um, so based on the actions that, that occurred, the two motions, it's a deemed denial. If one of the commission members that voted to deny, uh, would like to, you could make a motion of reconsideration for approval based on the additional information that has been received.
I'm open to changing my vote for a, a motion to reconsider if we can come up with a reasonable, uh, trap, truck traffic timeframe to try to do it off-peak, but I don't have an answer for that right now.
Can I?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to weigh in on the, on the trips. So, city of Rialto does have a special requirement, we do use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is a national source, but we only use it for these types of industrial development. The city specifically only allows the warehousing ITE one fifty land use code be used regardless of size. So the ITE Trip Generation Manual allows for any building that is in excess of two hundred thousand square feet to be considered what you could call a high cube warehouse. But if you look at the rates, a high cube warehouse generates significantly fewer trips than, um, a smaller warehouse. Um, for that reason, the city of Rialto in their guidelines requires the use of the ITE one fifty rate. In addition to that, we cannot use any of the other SEA QMD or ITE stated, um, vehicle mixes. We must use the city's defined vehicle mix, which, um, accounts for forty percent of truck trips. Me- which means of the trips that are being generated at the site from this trip generation calculated using the ITE rates, forty percent of those trips will be truck trips. At least that's how the traffic analysis is evaluated. So the numbers for the project, what's being generated for the project is considered, um, ultra-conservative even in comparison to what is being done in other agencies around the city of Rialto.
You want any conditions or reconsider, or you wanna stick with your vote?
Take a second.
What's that?
If we're gonna vote again, let's do it.
We. Stay with your vote?
When you guys have to make a motion, I can't.
Yeah, um. Is that, that yard active right now?
Yes, the yard is active with a tenant.
With trucks being stored there right now?
Yes, yeah, that, that aerial is a pretty recent aerial. If you can put the aerial on there, there we go. There we go. Yeah, so I think just visually, we can see there's far more than eighty-three there. Which this project would physically be limited, just physically, the the capacity can't even take eighty-three or more than eighty-three.
There's language in the conditional permit that doesn't allow any traffic, um, truck traffic around or employee traffic? Around or just truck?
Truck traffic, no truck traffic west of the site. There are conditions in the resolutions before you tonight for consideration that all the truck traffic would stay east of the site. And the site's been, the layout has been designed to also keep all that truck activity east of the site, away from the residents.
It might be the lesser two evils.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it really.
I I I would I would vote to a motion to reconsider my vote with the condition that um, no truck or employee traffic is west of it, you said?
Yeah.
West of the project site and um. Yeah, those are the conditions.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, procedurally, I I overlooked, uh, if you could formally close the reopened public hearing.
Yeah, so you're right. I'll close the public hearing.
And then you've made.
Move the close to public hearing.
Second. Okay. Uh, I make a motion to reconsider with the condition that no truck or employee traffic are west of that project. In addition, um, that the truck traffic be reevaluated a mo- a year after it's been uh, built.
Mm-hmm.
To determine if it's realistic to what these numbers you're saying. If it is, we need to bring it back.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that can be done.
Can we do that? Can I do that?
Yeah.
You can make that condition.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, before you vote, uh, Mr. Chairman, it it would be appropriate to ask the applicant.
Are you open to that?
They're acceptable to that proposal?
The the one concern would be the employee traffic, because we would love to hire residents of Rialto that are potentially west, so I would hate to limit the employee base of not having employees be able to drive west.
Um, well, okay, how about we do this, that the employee entrance not be on the west side of that building at all? That the issue like we're experiencing like Target, you have a racetrack of employees racing through a community to go to the warehouse there. That's my, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just trying to think it through, right? I mean, it would suck, right? You have a neighbor that lives right there and you can't go to work, right?
Oh, yeah, because all these kids got loud exhausts, so that's the problem too, uh, racing through it. That's the reality.
But trucks, no, I mean, that that, I mean, I don't think that was always the the condition.
Well, Mae, if you can, if you're willing to reroute the the employee traffic, the employee entrance to that building on the other side or not on the west, I'm willing to re- put my thing to reconsider and do a second.
Potentially relocate driveway onto Lilac instead.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. This this access um, would still need to remain for emergency vehicle access only. I'm pointing to the, yeah, the the uh, top right arrow. Emergency fire trucks and ambulances need to be uh, at.
Where was you, where were you planning on putting employee entrance by the houses?
Um, there would be three dri- all three driveways the employees could potentially use.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. Employees could use the two on Santa Ana and the one on Lilac.
I mean, I think I think we're concept agreeing with what you're agreeing to. I just I just wanna bring that up, because I wanna make sure we get it right, you know?
Yeah, I just want them to race through the neighborhood.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, we agree either.
We could always put a gate on that.
Are you open?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So this is to um, designate the drive uh, on the westerly part of the project on Santa Ana as emergency vehicle only? Is that what?
Yeah.
What's being proposed?
That's reasonable. Yeah. Do I have a second?
Oh, and the uh, traffic evaluation too.
Yeah. And the traffic evaluation. And one year after operation.
Go observe and.
And bring it back to the. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Frank. Alright, um, thank you, John.
Thank you.
And ma- ladies in the back, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Don't forget the traffic goal.
And the traffic. I didn't realize four hours of work on that. I'm a little concerned with that. I would be, I gotta talk with the city on that. That's. Okay, uh, planning commission authority duties and land development entitlements. We have some documents.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm gonna recommend that that be uh, well, not tabled, but but recalendered for the subsequent meeting.
Okay.
On February seventh, the city attorney will be attending and making a presentation on planning commission uh, duties and uh, authority.
Okay.
Um, and so I I think it would be appropriate to combine the the two.
That's the next one, the seventh?
The seventh, yes.
Put it in my calendar, wasn't that rude?
Yeah, so uh, I it makes sense, I think, to combine those two presentations into a single presentation to the uh, to the commission. If that's acceptable.
Do we chase Kobe off?
He he had a previous engagement he had to go to, so.
Oh, that is glass left there.
I'll fill in for Kobe. Um, next meeting is February seventh, as Robert stated too, so. And we have a couple items going. Um, the next one's a parcel map subdivision for a parcel on that northeast corner of Linden and Foothill. Um, they were gonna do a future proposed um, car wash and an auto store up there. Um, also two enterprises expanding, requesting to expand their use down on Valley Boulevard. And the third project we have is a proposed upgrade in alcohol sales from twenty to twenty-one for Sinclair on Cedar and Foothill on the southwest corner. So those are products we have.
Twenty to twenty-one? It was never twenty.
I'm sorry.
From age twenty?
No, I'm sorry, um, alcohol beverage or alcohol license to twenty-one.
Oh, okay, okay, so.
Those are the products we have.
I thought you said from twenty to twenty-one. Like, I know we could sell the minors, not minors, but you know.
So those are the products that are um, scheduled for the next planning commission meeting.
Okay.
So that's where the G and M bar used to be.
This, it's the existing Sinclair gas station. Um, it was, I'm I'm not sure what was it, what was it before? I I don't. Was G and M?
Used to go there for Friday night fish fry.
And then one last thing too, um, Chair, I know last time you were asking about Cosmella and the signs out there. Um, Publix went out there and they said actually.
What'd they say?
They actually said there's some signs that Target needs to um, fix and relocate, so they're work, they're gonna work on it and.
What about fixing that whole thoroughfare when they do the whole street? Are they gonna? Are you, you're planning on making that open back up again, right?
They're still working on it and looking at it. I'm not sure exactly what they're gonna do. Um, they're gonna get back to me on that. Um, they're still waiting for Fontana to finish their portion of it as well and open it up.
Who's in charge of that for the city?
It would be the city engineer and under him would probably be um, Art Servantes. He's, he does CIP projects and those types of projects, so. We've been in contact with, I have a follow-up as well for you.
Yeah, no problem. Maybe I'll like to talk with him too later, once he get closer. I I, because I'm living over there, like, to hear. I can tell him what the real, real-time issues are, what I think, and he can tell me whether I'm full of it or not and what he, his assessment is on it.
Okay.
Um, so um, planning commissioner comments, I just, I just had the one, obviously you covered one thing, but this traffic study requirement for the city, I would really like to revisit what our standards are for that, because establishing a baseline traffic uh, count on four hours is troubling to me. It's really troubling and it, I'm even more concerned that that that's not blatantly transparent in these reports. Because I think if the the community, I think community would be interested to know that these traffic studies are based on four hours. Now, now I kind of wonders why many of us up here are wondering, how in the hell are they coming up with that traffic assessment? And maybe can we, in, I'd like to look at what the standard is now. And then if we, if we can do a cross-comparison to uh, Rancho Cucamonga standards and and uh, Redlands, uh, and probably even the newer Fontana, I'm curious what their requirement is. And so I wanna see if we're way far out of the norm. Um, I used to always tell Mike's story, many, many people before you, if Rancho and Redlands aren't doing it, why the heck are we doing it? So I like to, always like to go to those two cities to see what their standard is, but I don't know.
Yeah, she, I guarantee you, she hasn't parked in that traffic.
Yeah, that traffic. I don't know if you've been on that during peak? It's crazy.
Typically go during the week and I'll go on. Actually, I got stuck. My truck pooped out on Riverside Avenue around five o'clock one day and, yeah, it's it's it's.
I was almost recommending that the traffic went toward Colton and Ri- Red Riverside, as opposed to Riverside Avenue, that would solve the problem too for today's warehouse. That was a joke, of course.
Mr. Chairman, it might be informative, um, at least the question comes up in my mind. Who and how are these standards developed? In the first instance, that every municipality goes to or all the traffic engineers? What's the underlying basis of those so-called standards?
Yeah, it's four hours.
How are, how are they?
Yeah, how do they come up with that standard that all the traffic engineers then follow?
When you're talking about their fair share, just adding one lane, we already found out, it's twenty-two million dollars, okay? Twenty-two million dollars, you're talking about three hundred thousand isn't uh, I mean, that doesn't cover, it's like you said, that's cigarette lighter.
And my concern is, what about the businesses that come in? We need to be more transparent. I think what transparency is one of the things that we need to focus on, because I think it's unfair to say no if they're trying to get, you know, to get their work done or get their proposals passed. It has to meet the city residents' needs too. We don't just put a warehouse here because, hey, they paid the fair share and all that stuff. What's it gonna do to the people that they live around there? I mean, one of the things I'd like to talk about too is buffer zones. That's been in the, in the mill for a long time. I don't know, do we have a buffer zone for the warehouses?
We we don't currently have a buffer zone, no. Just have setbacks that are required.
Can we explore that? I, that's just a suggestion. Can we explore it?
I I think that issue will be addressed in the presentation by the city attorney at your next meeting.
Good.
Uh, as just a general principle, um, that's certainly something you could discuss, but to actually move something like that forward would take the interest of the city council.
Can we discuss something else? It really bothers me. The warehousing doesn't bother me, traffic does, the streets do. Every time somebody comes to us, it's a spec building. We can't ask them how much trucks they're gonna have, because they don't know, because they're not gonna be in the building. So when you're building a spec building, there's so many unknowns, it's unbelievable. I mean, everything's guesswork. We guess we're gonna have three hundred and forty-five trucks. We guess we're gonna have fifty employees. We guess we're gonna have. There's nothing set, and I I don't think the city should take on a project that's that unknown. You know, if if you own the property and you're gonna build a building and you're gonna use that building, bring it to us. But if you're building for spec to make a profit, uh.
You'll never be here, once it's done. Once it's done.
There, every apartment building they build, all the houses not filled already, they rent them out to get it. They build a building, then they get their tenant. That's what it's done. Now, we know what's going on, and I understand that, I'm a real estate broker, so I do understand it. But it doesn't help the city.
No. No.
And it doesn't help us make a decision.
And it doesn't help the residents.
Every, everything that they brought to you and give it to you in writing is a guess. We guess we're gonna have this amount of employees. We guess we're gonna have, because we don't know, we, we're not gonna be there. But you remember when we built the in and out of north and the traffic? You go up and out, like crossing Riverside and out.
It is.
It's two lanes going in and out. You've been a longing year crossing the way of the bridge.
Yeah, we underestimated that big time.
No, actually, the ca- uh, commissioners were reminding the city about the parking issue that was gonna happen, the traffic. And they had to, city staff had to go back.
Yeah.
And engage the owner, and it still pops its head up. Remember, they wanted to have an extra coffee place or two?
Oh, that's right.
And we didn't do that, so we still have some parking, so.
But one thing I'll ask you, I noticed all these warehouses, the one is open. Did we ever get an idea how many people are actually working in the warehouse of Funda City of Rialto?
None.
Residents, residents?
How many is working?
How many resi- are you asking residents?
Residents.
Yeah.
Working in the warehouse.
We we don't have those numbers. Um, you know, they they hire.
You know anyone that worked in the warehouse?
I I know a lot of people who work at warehouses.
Do you, do you remember when Niagara Water came to us? Were you here?
I wasn't here, but I do remember when that came.
Niagara Water came to us and it was a big deal, a million square foot warehouse. That's big. And all that they were gonna do. They took us on a tour. This is daylight, weekday, full operation, eight employees in a million square foot, in these little carts running all over the place with a little thing on the top of it.
And guess where the water?
No drivers in it, just it running, they're going all over the place.
Guess where the pipe's water comes from?
Fontana.
Yeah.
Fontana.
They don't even take our water, they don't even buy our water.
But but after, all said and done, and then point of sale.
Remember that?
This, this is a big deal, point of sale. I don't know if you know it, but just that one street in Fontana probably brings in ten million dollars a year in auto sales tax to the City of Fontana. Right? So we get a million square foot, right? The water is bottled and it's shipped over to Costco in Fontana. Costco sells it. Oh, City Fontana gets the retail tax dollars on that water that was bottled in Rialto. Rialto didn't get anything. Stop and think about that.
I'm glad we're talking about this.
Same amount of square footage and land it was on would be like forty car dealerships. Got two hundred million dollars a year income, three hundred million? We don't have that. We got zero income. Poor planning. Plus, there is nobody there from Rialto working.
You don't have to say anything, Paul, you understand.
Yeah, I'm I'm not familiar with that, how that, how that business operates. I know everyone's a little different. You know, I I worked at UPS for nine years. I know there's a lot of employees in that building. You know, I think it depends on the type of user you have in the building. And and staff, we we always ask them, hey, which, who's your, who's gonna be your end user? And lots of times, they they don't know, you know, unless they're gonna build it themselves. Like, a while back, we had a a meat and cheese company who came in, like, yeah, we're building it for us and you guys approved it. Um, lots of times, they don't know, because until they have an entitlement, you know, they can't negotiate with whoever's gonna be there.
Yeah.
And I understand that, it's their business.
We just need, I mean, honestly, if you look at our city, I mean, I've been here for a lot of years. The only substantial improvement we've done in the city in fifty-plus years is Renaissance. Honestly, it is. We need to really be building blocks off of that, get the residential in there. I just, I wish we can get this thing moving. Downtown Rialto, I mean, it was a running joke, you get an ice cream at Dairy Queen and buy a used mattress across street. There used to be a store that sold used mattresses down there. This city has, it has potential.
You're missing the big business. You're missing a big business we had downtown, the used coffin dealer.
I don't remember that. It's just we, we're spending, and I know warehouses are very profitable, but we're gonna get to the point where we're built out with warehouses. And I know the city's oddly shaped, so it does, it's not the most ideal, but we had a huge opportunity. And I know it's above all of our pay grade in here, we're not the decision-makers here. We had a brand-new off-ramp, which is incre- We had a brand-new off-ramp, which is incredibly expensive to build, pepper, we could've really maximized that whole area, and what did we do, put another damn warehouse there? It's, it, it, it's maddening.
Cedar is also being expanded on the tin.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a concern.
You know, we've gotta start planning ahead, not doing it on a reflex basis.
And, and we're looking for it, I mean, last meeting, the commission, ac, actually last week, um, we voted on the Foothill Central specific plan update, which, you know, we're putting a lot of uses in there, higher density, we're trying to encourage commercial and, and businesses to come out of downtown. You know, I, I think we have one of the nicest downtowns around, to be quite honest with you, we have, it was good bones down there.
In the future?
No, cur, currently, I, I, I walk there twice a day, I try to get, get there twice a day, and there's a lot of nice businesses down there, it's very nice down there.
Down here?
Uh-huh. I, yes.
Do you ever go to?
I believe so, and, and, and we're, we're just trying to, we're, we're trying to add additional.
Sandwich shop, that's all I know that's downtown Rialto.
And, and we're trying to, um, add, add additional uses, more, more residential uses, and more opportunity for people to actually do that. Um, and there's, there's a big area, just like I said, I mentioned last time, just north of the Metro Link, where that's gonna be downtown two point O. So, we're, we're setting the groundwork now.
Alright.
And then we wanna bring in, bring in the developers and say, look, we have these opportunities for you.
Yeah.
You know, cause, cause we do, I mean, I live in Fontana, and you know what, they're downtown, it's a drive-through. And we, we have very, a very nice, we have good bones, we have a good, nice downtown, nice businesses to, for, for, you know, for nightlife and, and during the day, and, you know, I, I go to the hardware store, and I, and I, I do frequent the businesses down there, so.
Well, hopefully one day we can get, we can be like that, I mean, if Fontana's booming. It, it's really booming.
You know, and, and they have more warehouses coming in than we do. There's a lot of warehouses there, and I know.
City's bigger than ours, though.
Yeah.
Lot bigger, right?
And, and, you know, and, and the, the traffic.
Twice as many residents.
I'm sorry? Yeah.
Fontana's what, about two hundred thousand people, residents probably?
Two hundred and six, two hundred and ten thousand.
We're a hundred and seventeen, or?
Hundred and, about a hundred and six.
Yeah.
So. But, but getting back, I just wanna briefly touch on the, on the counts, and when, when they pick it for, yeah, you're right, I think it should be a few days to do it. If that's our standard, that's what they're doing. So, so what we, what we encourage them to do, and we, we make sure that they, they pick like a, a workday, you know, when the, when the traffic counts are the highest. So, they did like a Wednesday in the morning when traffic's the busiest.
That's the least, mu, have you been, Friday's a day, Friday would be the great.
Yeah, Friday would be a good day.
But honestly, it needs to be thirty days, in my opinion. And I, I, you know, well, let's see what you got, but four hours, man?
Yeah.
That's insane.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Do you realize the difference? He's talking about four hour, we do a traffic study. Do you remember the, the, the flower-loving, don't eye fly? You know how that was studied? Harvey Mudd College kids set up tents twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They were down there, waiting for a fly to come out of the ground, so they could time it.
Frank, I need your phone's ring. Is that your phone?
Yeah, it's my phone.
Oh.
Yeah, and, and I don't know for sure, it's just one day, you know, I, I was a little surprised it was only one, and I wanted to find out too, and talk to our traffic engineer and find out what the standard is.
It was between one and two in the morning and.
No, we, we would make sure it would be during, during the traffic, yeah.
That, that, basically, your foundation of data is, basically, it's heavily skewed. That's why, that's why people don't like statistics, you can make them go any direction you want, unfortunately. This is an example, and not saying it's misuse, it's, it's the parameters are set, so it's all fairness, that's what it is, but we need to evaluate what we can do for the future. And I think.
She hasn't sat in that traffic, I can tell you right now.
But she was very honest and transparent, which I appreciate it, um.
Move to.
Adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Adjourn, yeah, thank you, alright, appreciate it, guys. Well, that took a while.